Welcome to the meeting of the North Penn School District's Board of School Directors, May 18th, 2017. Welcome. Tonight, we're going to have our updated show, so watch one of the screens. Guys, could you run that?
Spring is finally in the air, and North Penn buildings are abuzz with many activities across each corner of the school district. One of the biggest district activities was the Sixth Annual Iron Knights Triathlon. Over 1,500 elementary school students in kindergarten through sixth grade swam, biked, and ran their way to the finish line in Crawford Stadium. The triathlon is an activity created by the elementary physical education teachers to encourage physical activity in their students. Another huge event did not involve much swimming or running, but it did involve lots of dancing as the class of 2017 had an enchanted evening at their senior prom. The Drexel Brook Ballroom was filled with fancy dresses, beautiful bouquets, and crisp suits and tuxedos galore as the students danced the night away. The senior prom unofficially kicks off the countdown to graduation on June 8th. Glenn Yeder's gifted students from Pendale and Pembroke Middle School participated in a unique experience to ignite their fellow classmates. Modeled after TED Talks, the students gave "ignite talks" on a variety of topics that are important in today's youth. Ignite talks encourage students to embrace public speaking while igniting the audience to become curious and motivated about the topics at hand. The North Penn High School auditorium was alive with music as the production of Joseph and the Amazing Technicolor Dreamcoat took the stage. A unique musical with very little dialogue wowed the audiences during each of the performances. But this was not the final curtain call for the Thespians as they head to the International Thespian Festival this summer in Nebraska. The International Spring Festival captured another wonderful celebration of our community's diversity. Cultural displays, ethnic foods, and musical performances brought our community together to embrace each other's unique cultures and to celebrate our differences. The district's teaching staff got down with the bits and bites during their Technology In-Service Day. After a keynote address, dozens of breakout sessions were held to help teachers learn more in-depth ways to incorporate technology into their classrooms. And finally, we're going to do a bit of self-promotion for some very exciting things that happened here at North Penn Television over the past few weeks. First, two of our students had the unique opportunity to attend the 2017 NFL Draft through the NFL Student Journalism Experience. Here, they saw the draft behind the scenes and put their skills to the test with the opportunity to interview a few NFL legends. Next, eight students in Kyle Berger's Advanced Television Production Class were awarded the top prize in Pennsylvania's 10-Day High School Film Festival for their film, Run. The film also was awarded Best Script, Best Use of Sound, and won the Audience Choice Award. The film is now entered in the National High School Film Festival competition. And finally, North Penn Television received three high school Emmys for the National Academy of Television Arts and Sciences Mid-Atlantic Chapter. In addition, we also received three other nominations which in this competition is an honor upon itself. With these three awards, NPTV has now won 18 Awards of Excellence from the Academy. For more on all these stories and more, log onto npenn.org or youtube.com/NPTV. For North Penn Television, I'm Noah Golden. Have a great night.
Welcome to our regularly scheduled action meeting. This meeting is being videotaped for community cable channels. Individuals attending this meeting and intending to speak to the board should be aware that they are being videotaped. In order to meet the requirements of Pennsylvania's Sunshine Law, it is necessary to record the names of all citizens who speak to the board during the meeting. To assure compliance with this requirement, it is essential that those planning to address the board come to the microphone, state their name and address, and sign the Audience of Citizens Logbook. Members of the audience are asked to limit their questions and comments. To allow time for all those who wish to speak to the board, the board president may ask the individual to yield the microphone to the next speaker. And now, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening again and welcome. I'm going to announce an executive session tonight. The board did meet an executive session on May 18th today, 2017, from roughly 6:30 to 7:35 to discuss matters of negotiations with our unions. Now it is time to, actually, our favorite time every year and every meeting when we can do it, we're going to do a recognition and proclamations. Dr. Teacher?
Thank you. This evening, we are pleased to recognize members of the North Penn High School's Academic Decathlon Team. And with us this evening to introduce those members, we do have Nancy Craig, the Academic Decathlon Coach, and Lisa Tyree, the Assistant Decathlon Coach.
Good evening, and thank you very much for having us here this evening. I want to take a moment just to explain a little bit about what Academic Decathlon is. Academic Decathlon is a national competition where we compete in 10 events, obviously a decathlon. These events are economics, social science, science, math, art, music, literature, speech, interview, and essay. Each team member must compete in all 10 events, so they must become experts in each one, and the combination score then becomes our team's score, and that's how we get to states and then to Nationals. This year's theme was World War II, which was very, very exciting. And I want to point out to you that this team brought back the state championship this year to North Penn. We've won it four times in the last five years, and I think that's very exemplary for us to do that.[413.24][413.24](APPLAUSE) Not only was it exciting to bring it back to North Penn, but we also hosted the Pennsylvania Academic Decathlon competition at North Penn High School this year in March. And this team decided that they were going to bring it home. And to quote Winston Churchill, "We will protect this house." And they did. Every team member here won multiple medals at states. And when we went to Nationals in Wisconsin in April, we placed 10th in the nation, and we brought home five national medals.[455.41][455.41](APPLAUSE) At this time, I would like to introduce the team. I'd first like to introduce my assistant coach, Lisa Tyree, who was a good help to us the entire year. Thank you very much.[475.52][475.52](APPLAUSE) Next is Yang Yu. Yang has been a member of our team since his freshman year. He's now a senior, so he's been to three of the four Nationals with the teams and has served as the team captain for the last two years.[495.81][495.81](APPLAUSE) Brittany Wiley, another valuable senior this year. Brittany got a national medal in Wisconsin, and hers was a silver in interview. This is Connie Jiang. Connie is a sophomore. She has been on the team now for two years. And Connie received two national medals out in Wisconsin. One was a bronze in essay, and the other was a silver in speech. And I need you to know that it's a tradition at Nationals that when you get a gold medal in speech, you must give your speech in front of the entire competition. And Connie was only one away from doing that in front of everyone, which... Another senior that we are going to be very unhappy to lose is a very valuable member of our team, and that was Matt Oreface.[583.82][583.82](APPLAUSE) Another senior, John Bogart. And John earned a medal in interview, and it was a silver at Nationals, correct?[605.12][605.12](APPLAUSE) Another senior, I'm graduating a lot this year, is Alex Goldberg, a very important member of our team this year, Alex.[626.29][626.29](APPLAUSE) And the next member of our team, another senior, and you'll recognize the last name because you just met his twin brother, but this is Justin Oreface. And he has been a valuable member of our team for the last two years.[648.82][648.82](APPLAUSE) Next is Nathaniel Mayer. He also is a senior. We're graduating all of our good seniors here. Nathaniel earned a silver in interview in Nationals.[673.44][673.44](APPLAUSE) This one, we don't lose. This is Dan Sible, and Dan is a junior, and he hopefully will be back next year as another valuable member of our team.
Nancy and Lisa, would you join them? And guys, I'd like an opportunity for the full board and the full administration to congratulate you, so would you guys come through? And would you join them at the end, please?[718.82][718.82](MUTTERING) You know where you're going? You know where you're going? You guys know where you're going? All right? You know where you're going?
Yeah.
Congratulations, sir. Congratulations again. Congratulations, sir. Sible, I'll see you again in a future.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you very much.
My pleasure.
Excellent.
This time, we'd like to recognize students that competed in the Montgomery County Association of Teachers of Foreign Languages, James J. Doyle Oral Proficiency Contest. And with us this evening to recognize students, we have Nori Coyle, North Penn High School's Japanese teacher.
My name is Nori Coyle, the Japanese teacher at North Penn High School. Thank you for being here tonight. I'd like to introduce students who are recognized in two different Japanese language competitions tonight. I'll start with James Doyle, Montgomery County Oral Proficiency Contest. This annual contest is offered to measure foreign language, language oral skills among students in the entire county. And individual interviews are conducted by foreign language professionals to determine which student is most proficient in the second language. There are two rounds in this contest, and the second round is very intense, and it could be intimidating and scary because all the contestants are there, and also their parents and their teachers are in the audience. Only top two students are invited to compete at the second round. So I'd like to introduce those students. Peter Engi. He's a Pendale ninth grade student and received first place in Level 01 at the oral competition. I might add, he also received silver award at the national exam.[897.00][897.00](APPLAUSE) Ella McCoy, she's an 11th grade student and received first place in Level 1 at the oral contest, and she also received silver award at the national exam.[913.31][913.31](APPLAUSE) Peter Lee, he's an 11th grade student and received second place in Level 2 at the oral competition. He also received silver award at the national exam.[930.00][930.00](APPLAUSE) Christine Ma, she's an 11th grade student and received first place in Level 3 at the Lori Park is 12th grade student and received second place in Level 3 at the oral competition. I might add, Lori also received silver award at the drama national exam this year.[963.73][963.73](APPLAUSE) And finally, Yan Chen is a 12th grade student and received first place in advanced level at the McPhu oral competition.[976.62][976.62](APPLAUSE)
Guys, I would love an opportunity for the full board, but you still have somebody here, so keep going.
We have one more.
And I have a second, well, we're going to have a second... We're going to have a second award. Should I start now? Okay, all right. The second award is the National Japanese Exam, and the National Japanese Exam is extremely challenging, and for that reason, some schools don't participate in this event. I'm very happy to say 27 North Penn students received awards by American Association of Teachers of Japanese. So I could have brought many more students, but I didn't think you wanted to stay until 10 o'clock tonight. So I'm going to introduce three very special students who received the top scores that makes them the national champions. Okay, first one would be Kai Lefiziosa. He's a 10th grade student and received perfect score at the Level 2 national exam. And Yan Chen received 97% of Level 3 national exam, one of the two highest scores in the country, making her this year's Level 3 national champion. Yan has been the national champion for the three consecutive years.[1073.44][1073.44](APPLAUSE) Christine Ma also received 97% at the Level 3 national exam, so she too is a Level 3 national champion. Christine also received scholarship from the YFU organization to study in Japan this Thank you very much.
It's an opportunity for the full board and the full administration to congratulate each and every one of you, so please come forward. And would you join them too at the end? I'd love to see the time right there on that. Congratulations. Let's spoil this for you and your recognition of your program. Thank you very much. Another round of applause for these guys.[1141.00][1141.00](APPLAUSE)
We are also pleased this evening to recognize students for their accomplishments in the National Latin Exam. And with us this evening to introduce our students and tell us a little more about this is our North Penn High School Latin teacher, Jonathan Rocky.
Thanks very much for having us here tonight. I'll tell you just a little bit about the National Latin Exam. It's a national exam in Latin, and it's given annually in March. An increasing cohort of students, not just in the United States, but in several countries in Europe and South America and the Middle East participated. I think in the exam this year, something in the neighborhood of 140,000 students. The people you see before you are, they constitute the biggest contingent in any year of North Penn students that have earned a gold award, and a gold award is essentially the top 10% of the participants. So it's a real achievement. It covers the entire range of traditional Latin high school instruction, and I say usually, and a little more because we never feel like we're completely ready for it. The exam is given in March, but the students always rise to the challenge admirably. We also have sprinkled in here a few winners of the closely kept secret at North Penn is we also offer a little bit of Greek. Not for credit, it's not a course, but it's something that I asked the previous principal if I could commandeer the ninth period study time and teach Greek, and Mr. Hein said, "You teach Greek?" And I did, and I do, and that program is a little bit in flux given the projected changes for ninth period next year, but we'll see what we can do to make that continue happening. I will just call the names of the students by class in alphabetical order, and you may proceed slowly and ceremoniously to get the handshakes, and I have a couple special awards and recognitions at the end. So among sophomores, we have Yak Young Kim.[1297.58][1297.58](APPLAUSE) Lucas Morley, who also was a Greek student this year and an awarded Greek student.[1315.75][1315.75](APPLAUSE) John Pham.[1321.91][1321.91](APPLAUSE) And Denalia Z.[1335.75][1335.75](APPLAUSE) Our juniors include Benjamin Allmark.[1344.25][1344.25](APPLAUSE) This is Benjamin's second high school gold award, and he also this year earned the highest school award. Anoop Bhatt.[1356.33][1356.33](APPLAUSE) This is also Anoop's second high school gold, and as if to prove that teachers really aren't that necessary, Anoop went ahead and got a gold award on the strength of independent study this year. And Erin Spross, who also earned a Greek award.[1377.52][1377.52](APPLAUSE) Our senior gold awardees are Alexander Goldberg. This is his second high school gold.[1389.83][1389.83](APPLAUSE) Carl Hamilton, is this your second or third high school gold? Third? Yeah, third high school gold.[1400.33][1400.33](APPLAUSE) Eli Heisey, who could not be here, he's out of the state. And Christopher Savanas also could not be here because I think he was taking his third makeup AP exam today. So give him an extra clap.[1418.62][1418.62](APPLAUSE) And then Brittany Wiley with her third high school gold.[1425.62][1425.62](APPLAUSE) And Carl and Brittany also were Greek award winners. Let me just mention two other students, well, two students again. If you get a gold on the National Latin Exam, I forget if it's three times or four times in your high school year, you get a big fat doorstop of a book. And I'm always a little jealous of students that get this because I had to pay 95 bucks for my copy. They get, Benjamin Allmark and Brittany Wiley get a copy of the Oxford Classical Dictionary. So...[1468.41][1468.41](APPLAUSE) All right, I'll hold him for you.
Guys, it is an opportunity for the full board and the administration to congratulate each and every one of you, so guys, come on through, and would you join them at the Well done. Well done, sir. Smile, you're okay. Well done, sir. Well done. Well done, sir. See you again. Well done. Well done. Well done again, sir. Well done. Congratulations. Thank you very much. This is for you and the guys who weren't here tonight. Would you make sure they get a copy? Another round of applause for these guys.[1520.02][1520.02](APPLAUSE) As you leave, please remember this will be rebroadcast on May 19th at 7:30, May 22nd at 12:30 and 7:30, and Tuesday, the 23rd, 12:30 and 7:30, and then Wednesday at 12:30 again on Cable Channel 28 or FIOs 29.
We are quite proud of our students. We think they're doing a tremendous job, our teachers doing a tremendous job, as well as our administrators and support staff, and we're really proud to be able to recognize them through these kinds of opportunities like this. I do want to take this occasion to call to the attention of our members in the audience and those that are watching home. There is a bill right now in the House that's set for consideration coming up real soon, House Bill 1213. I would encourage you to oppose House Bill 1213. House Bill 1213 is not good legislation. In fact, it's very one-sided legislation, legislation that would benefit really significantly the big box stores and the large apartment complexes. It would change the way that valuations are done in commercial property to the detriment of North Penn School District very significantly. North Penn School District does have 39% of its tax base being commercial. So if we look at the impact across all school districts in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, Philadelphia would have the largest hit, followed by Pittsburgh, and third on the list is North Penn School District. So that would be a significant change to the way commercial properties are valued. That would be a big detriment to North Penn School District. Another important part of this bill that is very troubling to me is the inability, according to this bill, for school districts to initiate appeals of property values. We've been doing that very successfully, and as a matter of fairness, in the North Penn School District, and it has made an impact for us and our ability to fund our schools, and this bill would prohibit us from doing that. So that's a big concern to me also. So in addition to the way property tax is calculated on our commercial properties, and the theory that they are going to is something called a dark store theory, and you can research that some more, it's a big concern, and then also the way that they would prohibit us from doing appeals that would be initiated by the school district. And finally, the third component of the bill that is very troubling to me that would have an immediate impact on our revenues to the tune of in excess of $3 million is the fact that if this bill were passed, any of the properties for which we have arrived at a settlement with the property owner, we would have to revert back to the original assessment prior to the negotiation, starting with those property owners and the settlement being arrived upon. And this dates all the way back to the last time that we had county-wide uniform reassessment. In the case of Montgomery County, I think that's approximately $1998. So it's a big concern to us. I do encourage you to become more aware of House Bill 1213 and to contact your legislator and urge your legislator to oppose 1213.
Thank you. All right, we're going to move forward with our Audience of Citizens. Anyone wishing to speak to the board, feel free to step forward, state your name and address, sign the Audience of Citizens logbook. As she signs in, the House Bill 1213 is bad news for North Penn. It will shift the burden from commercial properties who already get a break at 56% of their value and shift it directly to the taxpayers or cripple our ability to deliver the quality of education that we offer. So that's why the superintendent took a few moments to try to explain to you just how negative impact we are in this.
Good evening, Board. My name's Selena Pavlianyeti, and I live at 106 Windsor Circle. I was informed yesterday that portable AC units were placed in three of the four fourth grade classes that my son attends. They just happen to be the three main classes that my son is in. While I would love to be able to sit here and say thank you to all of you, I can't. I would like to know why these were put in these specific classes. Was it because of just my son? I feel that it's a total disgrace to him, me, and all of their parents in the six remaining schools that... schools that do not have air conditioning, that those three classes be singled out. Why would you, as a board, single out one child, one grade, and one class? Sorry, this is very upsetting to me. To me, this was very poorly thought out and a total waste of money. My son now, from other kids, can possibly be singled out, because it was only his three classes that have AC. As far as I know, and please correct me if I'm wrong, no other units have been put in any of the other six remaining schools. I believe that we owe every single child, every single teacher, staff member, whatnot at these schools, an explanation of how and why this was decided on, and what was taken into consideration to only put AC in those three classes. My question to all of you is, have any of you been to those six remaining schools also in the past two days? I'll take the silence as a no. Well, I have. I was there on Tuesday for a school event, the school in general, comfortable, all classes, school, comfortable. I was also there Wednesday and Thursday, with temperatures anywhere from 80 to 82 And for those of you who continue to say it's not that bad, I did take pictures of all the thermostats, including the air-conditioned units in the fourth grade. Those units were set at 70. Those classes were 80 and 82 degrees with those AC units. Was that money now put in completely wasted? Are we wasting all of that money that we just did? It looks like it. Is there something wrong with them? Does it need to be fixed? That also brings me to my next consideration and concern, classroom size. According to North Penn Board Policy 6151, Guidelines for Establishing Classroom Sections, size guidelines are as follows. Kindergarten, 22 to 25 students, grades 1 to 3, 23 to 26, and grades 4 to 6, 25 to 29. Let me remind you that this policy hasn't been reviewed or revised since March of 2011, and really needs to be. Over the past couple of years, North Penn has made a change to mainstream or do full inclusion for all of the students, which is wonderful, if the classes and the teachers have the help needed and a manageable class size with everyone's needs taken into consideration. When making these guidelines, a lot of information should be taken into consideration, not just the average number of students per class. I have one child who has an IEP, a learning disability, seizures, and needs small group help, and one child who learning comes very easily to, so I see both sides of it. How can you expect one teacher, and occasionally one aide in a few of the classes, to adequately care for 25 to 29 kids? You can't. This is not fair to the kids who need help, or I'm sorry, this is not fair to the kids who do not need help and are bored, because the teacher has to spend time with those who do need more help, the kids who do need more help but can't get it, because there's too many kids in the class, and the teachers who are trying their very best but are spread way, way too thin. It's the school's legal responsibility to provide least restrictive learning environment for these children, and I don't feel that it's being met. For Gwennor next year, classroom projections are as follows, and this is without any new children moving into our school during the summer. The first grade going into second grade has 75 kids. The teachers were told to divide it two different ways, three sections, which would be 25 kids per class, almost at your max, and four sections, which would be 18.75 kids per class. Second going into third isn't truly a big issue, but there's 89 kids, four sections, three classes with 21 kids, and one class with 23. Third going into fourth, which is a huge issue. The class currently has four sections with an average of 21.5 kids. We're being told fourth grade is to squish down to three sections, one class with 28, and two classes with 29, already at our max. Fourth grade going into fifth grade has 94, four sections, that would be two classes with 23 and two with 24. Fifth going into sixth, again, another huge issue. We have the largest amount of fifth grade going into sixth grade in our district, by a decent amount, 11 actually, I believe it is. Currently, fifth grade has class sizes of 27, 30, 28, and 30. Currently, there's three sixth grade classes, and we're being told that there'll be four next year. With four classes and 115 students, that's an average of 28.75 kids per class. As we all know, and have been taught from good math, 28.75 should be rounded up to 29, which is the max, again, before any other kids moving into this district. Sixth grade for the 2017-2018 school year should not have four, they need to have five classes. When you compare Gwennor's current fifth grade to the rest of the elementary schools in our district, it varies greatly. I'm going to save the time, I think you guys can all look up the statistics, but the next closest is 27 per kids. The rest of them are anywhere from 22 to 24 for the majority of the classes. We are well, well above. Something needs to be done about this, and something should be done quickly. The school board needs to look at what is right for our kids and our staff, not what the cost is going to be. And lastly, I want to congratulate the members of our community that ran on Tuesday's election. Thank you for seeing that we need change and stepping up to make that change happen.
Hi, my name is Natalie Wagenhofer. I'm 145 Jonathan Drive. I second Elena's letter, because as she just read, my son is one of the kids, third grade going, and the fourth grade next year, who will be with a brand-new IEP. A class size of 28 to 29 students before any new kids add it is not at his least restrictive environment. Putting him in a large class with one teacher will likely make him regress, and me, as a parent, and you, as a school board, cannot let that happen. It's all about the students and the teachers.
Hello, my name is Jennifer Kowalik. I live at 121 Gwennly Drive. I have a second and a fourth grader at Gwennor, and it was brought to my attention by my fourth grader that two of his classrooms currently have the AC units that were put in, I believe, on Tuesday. So my question to you is, which schools in the district were given these new units? And how many of the, like, how many classrooms have been fitted with them in the past month?
This is a time for Audience of Citizens. Feel free to make statements, comments. I can't answer that question unless Mr. Kennedy, you can.
Three at Gwennor and one at NAP.
So if I wanted to question how the process is done, and the criteria needed, and placing these...
You could come to a committee meeting at facilities, which is going to happen in a week. Monday, or the 30th?
30th, yes.
On Monday, it's a holiday.
Oh, sorry, Tuesday the 30th.
Tuesday the 30th, where they'll talk about any of those issues related to that.
So to understand the process of choosing which classrooms are deemed... Okay, thank you.
All right, let's move forward with the agenda tonight. Recommend approval of the minutes of the May 19, May 9, 2017 Special Action Meeting as circulated. Motion by Mr. O'Donnell, second by Mr. Schilling. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes are approved. We're going to move forward with our committee reports, education, community, and policy. Mrs. Spokowski.
Thank you. The ECP Committee met on Monday, May 8. During that committee, during that meeting, the committee was provided an update regarding the AP Capstone Program at the high school. North Penn High School is currently one of only 17 high schools in the state of Pennsylvania certified by the College Board to offer the AP Capstone. AP Capstone is comprised of a sequence of two multidisciplinary courses, AP Seminar and AP Research, that foster the development of independent research skills, collaborative teamwork, and communication skills. This year, six students completed the AP Seminar course, and five will move on to the AP Research course in 2017-18. For 2017-18, 11 students are enrolled in the AP Seminar course. Students who successfully complete the AP Capstone course with a score of three or higher receive an AP Seminar and Research certificate. An AP Capstone diploma is awarded to students who score a three or higher in AP Seminar, AP Research, as well as four additional AP exams of their choice. Also at this meeting, representatives of the kindergarten committee presented five options for improving the achievement of kindergarten students in our district. These options are smaller class size, summer camp for all buildings, extended day for students needing support, full-day kindergarten, and increased partnerships with local early learning providers and families. The committee discussed the options presented and listened to public comments regarding the presentation. Two of the concerns expressed by the committee were cost and classroom space. Additional information about the full-day kindergarten option, including the results of the long-range enrollment study being conducted by the Montgomery County Planning Commission, was requested by the majority of the committee. Two student travel items were also reviewed at the committee, and our next committee meeting will be Monday, June 12 at 6:30 PM. Here.
Thank you. Any questions of ECP?
I have a question. Actually, I have a statement, because I'm a member of the ECP Committee. There was a year-long study that was, was created to determine what other options there could be, including all-day kindergarten. The staff and the committee put a lot of hard work and put up a lot of good information presentations. There were numerous people that came up to the microphone to discuss their opinions, not only about all-day kindergarten, but other options as well. And the committee took a vote to not bring this up to the full school board to have any further discussion. And I would like to, I would like to ask this school board to at least have this presentation made to, to us in full, so that we can have a little bit more conversation about what's going on with all-day kindergarten, the need, the cost, and the feasibility of actually doing that. Thank you.
Mrs. Spokowski.
Let me add, at that committee meeting, what was recommended was that we not bring anything forward until we had full information. In particular, the long-range enrollment study that is being conducted, that we are paying for, that, that tells us what the needs are demographically, is what the needs are. And that does not preclude us bringing it to the full board. It says, let us look at it all.
Well, I understand that. I, as, again, I don't want to argue with you, because it's not my nature, but I think that, I think that we can have brought that to the full board, knowing whether the long-range study is here or not. Whether, the long-range study is not going to tell us whether we should have all-day kindergarten or not, it's just going to tell us whether we need to shift populations or not. And I think, I think for discussion and know how long things take around here, I was upset that it was, it was tabled, and there would be no further discussion about it. And so was, so were the people that came up to this podium. We're not asking that anybody approve it, we're asking to have a little bit more conversation about it.
And I think that's what Mrs. Spokowski just said, as long as full, all the information's available when you have that discussion. Why would you have a partial discussion?
It's not a partial discussion, it's a totally...
Full discussion.
Without the information that you requested.
The information that we requested was to see the trends in population. It didn't determine, or not determine, whether full-day kindergarten was a good idea, and what other options there were, and whether there was a need for it.
Well, there were five options presented, right?
Exactly.
I supported the summer camps, just so you know. I read through all the information that was available.
But you didn't see the presentation?
I read through everything, including the presentation.
Okay.
When's the study expected to be completed? Do we know? Do we, it was before the end of the school year, right?
Yeah. The individual that leads the study from the Montgomery County Plan Commission has scheduled a meeting to meet with some administrators to look over a preliminary, to see if it provides all the information we expected it would provide, to see if there's any additional work that they would need to do. And if it is all the information that we asked them to provide, and there is no additional work, then I would expect it would come sooner. If there are things that are missing from the expectations, and we haven't even seen any of it yet, but if there are things missing, he would ask them to have some time to go back and to gather the information that he has not yet gathered. So we will have that answer shortly.
Okay. I would just request that, when it comes out, I assume that will be made a public, a public document.
Safe Schools, Mrs. Spokowski.
Yes, thank you. The Safe Schools Committee met on Monday, May 8 as well. An action plan and timeline was presented detailing the development of building-level CERT teams, gathering building safety information, training for CERT teams, and the annual drill schedule. The building CERT teams will be formed by September and begin to perform tabletop exercises along with managing annual emergency drills. District administrators attended a law enforcement collaboration meeting at the ESC, along with a Safe Schools Symposium at Penn State Great Valley. Both events provided practical insights to assist the preparation of our CERT teams. We are continuing the process of providing local police access to our security camera systems. The next Safe Schools Committee meeting will be held on June 12 at 6:00 PM in the ESC. Thank you.
Thank you. Finance, Mr. O'Donnell.
Finance Committee report for Thursday, May 18, 2017. An update from the regular meeting of April 24 and the special meeting of May 4, 2017. Under new business, the monthly financials were reviewed with additional discussion on the following item, the 2017-18 Enterprise Fund budget. Ms. Scott and Mrs. Gallagher presented information regarding the extended school care and school nutrition service budgets, respectively. There is no increase being proposed in extended school care tuition, and there is no increase being proposed in student meal prices for next year. Each budget reflects a $50,000 contribution to the general fund. Finance Committee meetings, Mrs. Rocky reviewed the proposed calendar for 2018 meetings. There will be four special meetings for the purpose of budget development, which is similar to this year. 2017-18 budget update, the Mrs. Rocky made presentations, budget presentations at each meeting highlighting the changes that were made since the last meeting. The presentations are posted online. The Retirement Rate Stabilization Fund utilization was finalized at $1 million. The proposed final budget was subsequently approved at the May 9 Board Work Session. Items recommended for Work Session, Action Meeting tonight, budget transfers, 2017-18 School Nutrition Service Budget, 2017-18 Extended School Care Budget, Disability Policy Contract, and the Madison Willow Wick Apartments Appraisal Contract. Next meeting will be on Tuesday, May 30 at 6:30 PM at the ESC. End of report.
Thank you, Frank. Personnel, Mr. Kerr.
Yeah, you know, for all the veteran, veteran attendees of board meetings, I should do kind of a sing-along, because you all know what I'm going to say. Personnel Committee met in executive session on May 2, 2017, from 5:30 to 6:30 PM to discuss, and this is where you all should, you know, to discuss matters of...
Personnel.
Negotiations.
Negotiations.
Potential litigation. There we go. You're going to miss that, I know. I'm going to miss that, though. End of report.
Thank you, Mr. Kerr. Support Services, Mr. Schilling.
Thank you, Mr. Shapinski. Support Service Committee met on Monday, the 24th of April, 2017. Committee reviewed change orders for Montgomery Elementary School renovation project. Committee also discussed the asbestos abatement at Pendale Middle School, scheduled for the summer of 2017. The Pembroke Middle School dust collection system project was reviewed. A meeting was scheduled with upper Gwennet Township to review the scope of this, of this work. And the committee also reviewed the facility use report and evangelism report. Our next meeting, Support Service meeting, will be held May 30, that's Tuesday, 2017, 6:00 PM here at the ESC. End of report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schilling. North Monco Technical Career, who has the report?
I guess I have the report.
North Monco met on May 17. We discussed the employment of an IT administrator. We granted approval of summer hours for three guidance counselors, summer hours for copy people. We approved student travel. There was a proposal to put out bids, or actually, they did put out bids, for paving of the parking lots. There's one portion that they're holding off on. That, that bid came out at $111,000, so we're going to be revisiting that. And that's about it. That's it for that. So our next meeting is Monday, June 19.
And that will be before our next meeting?
To, what, for the budget?
Well, we'll have a meeting in June before that meeting, correct?
15th, I think it was.
15th, yeah.
Yeah, 15th.
So we'll have an opportunity, that Mr. Diazio is going to leave that, that board, and we're going to have to appoint somebody, and Mr. MCIU...
He didn't tell anybody yet, but, so he's there for another month.
We said it in the meeting.
Yeah, okay.
So I knew we were willing to...
Yes.
Okay, so we can do that in June, too. Everybody should be aware, it's going to happen on the agenda. Let's, Montgomery County Intermediate Unit, Mr. Diazio.
Thank you, Mr. Shapinski. There's no new report this month. The MCIU Board does meet next Wednesday, May 24, and I will update the board at the June meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Diazio. North Penn... Thank you, Mr. D'Azio. North Penn Education Foundation?
Yes, thank you. May has been a great month for the foundation. First, our third annual online auction closed on May 1st, and we raised over $8,000. From vacations to front-row seats at graduation, the items donated by staff, schools, and community businesses are very much appreciated. Foundation trustees also approved 34 grants for the 2017-18 school year for a total of $26,728. Some of these programs will be funded through the state's educational improvement tax credit program. Also at the meeting, the foundation approved up to $18,000 to fund online access at home for our neediest students. Like last year, this is an important part of the school district's one-to-one technology initiative. Next up is the foundation's annual golf classic being held on Monday, August 14th, at Pinecrest Country Club. This year's theme centers around jazz and New Orleans. It is sure to be fun, and hope you can join me on the greens. Finally, it is a staff tribute time. For those who would like to honor a North Penn School District staff member with an end-of-year gift, this is a great option. Parents can make a donation to the foundation in a staff member's name, and in the process, recognize them for the influence they had on their child. Each year, staff tributes bring in thousands of dollars to the foundation, which in turn, go right back into our classrooms. Information on this can be found on the North Penn School District website, as well as the foundation's website. If you have any questions about the foundation, you can contact Christine Libarowski at the ESC. Our next meeting is June 7th at the ESC. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we're going to move forward with the superintendent's report. Dr. Dietrich.
Thank you, Mr. Shapinski. I recommend approval of Change Order GC 5 to Low Bar Construction Incorporated for the Montgomery Elementary School Edition and Renovation Project at a change of contract amount of $6,027.14 for the removal of BATT insulation during Phase 1, per item 2417.
Motion by Mr. Schilling.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Prokowsky. Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Approved.
Recommend approval of Change Order PC 2 to Myco Mechanical Incorporated for the Montgomery Elementary School Edition and Renovation Project at a change of contract amount of $3,845.16 for grease trap revisions based on Montgomery Township Sewer Authority requirements, per item 2517.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Schilling, second by Mr. D'Azio. Comments or questions?
Question. Did the Township Sewer Authority let us know what these requirements were ahead of time?
No, they came in and inspected my, you crap me.
That's correct.
It's not a standard requirement?
Right, it was after the fact.
But it's not a standard requirement that they should have known about?
We designed to code at 1,000 gallons, and they preferred 1,500 gallons.
Okay. All right, thank you.
You know, in all years we've done projects, it doesn't get into, it usually doesn't pay us to argue with their changes and requirements.
It's just in the first.
Yeah, that's, you know, the last time I remember, Roy, it was you had to have certain trees from Alaska on the east side of this, and it was like an amazing list of things we had to do that had nothing to do with anything, other than their preference.
Right, that's correct.
All right, I have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Approved.
Recommend approval of Change Order RC 1 to Waterproofing Technologies Incorporated for the Montgomery Elementary School Edition and Renovation Project at a change of contract amount of $10,410.79 for additional roof drains and temporary roof drain tie-ins, per item 2617.
Motion by Mr. Schilling, second by Mr. McGee. Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Approved.
Recommend the award of a contract to Bonneton Associates to design a dust collection system at Penbrook Middle School in the amount of $6,850, per item 2717.
Motion by Mr. O'Donnell, second by Mrs. Prokowsky. Comments or questions?
Just a quick question about this. Did we ever determine what the scope of this project was going to be? I thought at the last Support Services meeting, we were still waiting on clarification.
We did. We met with the Pogwidda Township, and it's going to be an equipment replacement only, the unit outside the building, and not a full-scale renovation in the woodshop. And they're, they're agreeable to that.
Okay. Do we know what the estimated cost on that is?
The architect estimated $75,000.
For the project?
For the, for the equipment, yeah. And that's, that was, we were notified about that.
Right.
Whatever email.
But that was the lesser of the two costs, correct?
The larger project had been $300,000, possibly.
I have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Approved. Go ahead.
I recommend approval of the North Monco Technical Career Center 2017-18 budget, per item BA 4A through KK.
Motion by Mr. Kerr, second by Mr. Schilling. Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Approved.
Recommend approval of the employee assistance contract with the Penn Foundation, effective July 1st, 2017 through June 30th, 2018, at a total cost of $24,000, per item 2917.
Motion by Mr. O'Donnell, second by Mr. Schilling. Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Approved.
Recommend approval of the Nutrition Services Budget for the 2017-18 school year, per item BA 5A through F.
Motion by Mr. O'Donnell, second by Mr. McGee. Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Approved.
Recommend approval of the Extended School Care Budget for 2017-18 school year, per item BA 6A through B.
Motion by Mr. O'Donnell, second by Mr. Schilling. Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Approved.
Recommend approval of the 2018 school board meeting dates and the committee meeting dates, per item BA 7A through B.
Motion by Mr. Schilling, second by Mr. McGee. Comments or questions? Did we compare those dates to the actual calendar?
Yeah.
To make sure we didn't have any interference. Susan, did you look at it, too?
I did not.
Okay. Would you get back to it? If we have to change it, we will.
So is the eve before.
I know.
Yeah.
To make sure we don't have a problem with it. I mean, I, I really did make an effort to make sure that they didn't do that this time, but.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
I have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Approved. Let's move on.
Recommend approval of the district's trustee and alternate trustee to the Southeastern Pennsylvania Schools Trust, commonly known as CPAS, as per item BA 8.
So moved.
Motion by Mrs. Prokowsky.
Second.
Second by Mr. Kerr. Comments or questions?
What are the implications of this? I know we talk about it every year, but these designees, what, what's their role?
We do serve as trustees on a board of governance, and we have meetings where all of those districts that are members of the CPAS group meet and make decisions on our medical and prescription drug coverage. We monitor, you know, balances that each of the members have. There are some requirements to maintain certain balances. And then, very importantly, we study trends in the medical and pharmaceutical world, and ways that we can contain cost.
Any other comments? I have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Approved.
Recommend and request permission to apply for the grant entitled Technical Assistance and Dissemination to Improve Services and Results for Children with Disabilities. It's sponsored by the United States Department of Education's Office of Special Education Programs. It would be for an amount not to exceed $2 million. If awarded, the grant will support implementation and sustainability of inclusive practices for students with significant cognitive disabilities through technical assistance and resources.
So moved.
Motion by Mrs. Prokowsky, second by Mr. McGee. Comments or questions?
Yes, technical assistance and resources, is that how many people?
We have, we, what we have to do is write a grant proposal, and, and in that proposal, we have to request how many, if we want to pay for staff, pay for resources, so forth. Dr. Ruffo and her team will be working on putting that together.
Aye, thank you. I'd like to add, high-five your people for going after this money. It's a significant amount of money to benefit all our kids, and I appreciate, Jenna, your work with this, and I appreciate your work, too, Diane.
Thank you. And I believe, Jenna, this is a multi-year grant, if I remember correctly, correct?
Yes, so in year one, there's, now, there's one award for-
Right.
-the whole country, but why not us? So in year one, it's 2 million. It's a three-year grant, which is possible 2 million each year, and the ability to expect a provision of two years beyond the first year.
Not a word.
Way to go.
That's okay.
All right, I have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Approved. Mail the application.
All right, we recommend acceptance of the gifts to the district as listed.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Schilling, second by Mrs. Prokowsky. Comments?
Yeah, I want to thank all the home and school associations that contributed these gifts. Really appreciate it.
I have, I have a quick question.
Shoot.
On the sign donation, did the district support that project at all, or is that solely the, the funds of the home and school? I, I only ask because we've had requests come through the Support Services Committee for other schools.
Entirely the home and school is funding that sign.
Okay, thank you.
That is awesome. They're going to put all their sixth-grade graduates on the line, like they do at the high school?
We appreciate it.
You take your picture near your son? All right, I, I have a motion in a second. Everybody agree to accept?
Yes.
Excellent. Let's move forward. Personnel.
Recommend the approval of personnel items as listed, A through C.
Motion by Mr. Kerr, second by Mr. Schilling. Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Approved.
Recommend approval of student travel, per item BA 11.
So moved.
Motion by Mrs. Prokowsky, second by Mr. Kerr. Comments or questions?
Good luck.
Yeah.
Anaheim. Burgers on the beach.
Yep.
So hopefully our guys will. Yeah, do that. Would you please, guys?
I have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Approved.
Recommend approval of contracts, per item BA 12A through D, copies of which are on file in the Office of Business Administration.
Motion by Mr. Kerr, second by Mrs. Prokowsky. Comments or questions?
I have a question. Just curious, for a lot of our summer camp contracts, the, the amount of the contract is a certain amount, less 16 percent. Is that governed by some sort of agreement that we have, or how does that work?
That's correct.
Okay. And so we're awarding these contracts with, these are staff members who run summer camp programs over the summer?
There, many are staff members, not all, but the scope of their services warrant them to be treated as independent contractors for the purposes of the camp, not employees.
And these camps are paid for by the users?
Correct.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
I have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Approved.
Recommend approval of alternative placements, per item BA 13, copies of which are on file in the Office of Special Education.
So moved.
Motion by Mrs. Prokowsky, second by Mr. Kerr. Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Approved. Let's move forward. Thank you, Dr. Dietrich. Let's move forward with our finance report. Mr. Shrocki.
Thank you, Mr. President. As Mr. O'Donnell mentioned in the Finance Committee report, the proposed final budget was approved by the board on May the 9th, is now advertised and available for public review. We are scheduled for final budget adoption on June 15th. The Treasury's report for tonight is for the month of April, 2017. Cash receipts for the month of April totaled $3,909,347.93, while disbursements totaled $15,604,539.1 cent. That leaves us with a balance through the end of April of $92,729,668.14, which is roughly $3.2 million higher than the same period last year. End of report.
Thank you. Let's move forward with sanction and approval of invoices.
I recommend ratification of disbursements for the month of April, 2017, in the amount of $19,6,608.92.
Motion by Mrs. Prokowsky, second by Mr. O'Donnell. Comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Approved.
Thank you. I recommend approval of the March and April 2017 budget transfers in the amount of $712,373.56, per item BA-16A through D.
Second.
Motion by Mr. O'Donnell, second by Mr. McGee. Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Approved. Other, other business. Recommend appointing up to three voting delegates to the 2017 Assembly to be held on Friday, October 20th, 2017, after the closing of the PASA PSB School Conference. I've had a request put in by Patrick McGee, Terry Prokowsky, and Mrs. Charnock to be those three delegates. Do I have a motion in that ever?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Schilling, second by Mr. D'Azio. All those in favor?
Aye.
Approved. Any motion to adjourn? Done.